Welcome to Williamsport City Council Meeting of January 17th, 2019. Please rise for an invocation by Councilman Randy Allison, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight thankful and grateful that we live in a country where we have the freedom to govern ourselves in a way that's democratic and fair and just and representative of all the citizens. And we never want to take that for granted, and we give you thanks for that tonight. We pray that we can always continue in this freedom. And Lord, tonight, we also lift up the year before us, 2019. It's already turning out to be very eventful on the city level, and it's going to be a busy year. There's a lot of things going on, elections, big issues that we have on the table, and there's always the undercurrent of our budget and watching the dollars and cents. All these things are going to mean maneuvering all kinds of different waters and circumstances and situations. Lord, we pray that you'll help us to keep focused all throughout this year on the things at hand, the governing of the city, and coming up with solutions that will benefit all of us. And finally, tonight, Lord, we're all aware of the police officers across this country who've been wounded and killed in a short span of time. And Lord, we think of one of our own, Officer Corita, who was honored in this room for his bravery not that long ago, and who put himself in the line of danger and risked life and limb. And tonight, we thank you that his life was spared. And we thank you that he was protected from further harm, Lord, as he attempted to confront an individual who had already committed homicide that night. Lord, with that in mind, we want to pray for the family members of those across this country who have lost loved ones, who have put themselves in harm's way. We pray that you comfort them and strengthen them. Lord, and we pray for ours tonight, our police force, Lord, our fire department, our codes department, our streets and parks, Lord, all those who do at times varying dangers, confront varying dangers as they carry out their duties during the day. Lord, we pray for your protection over all of them, and we pray for your grace and strength on them and their families every day, and we ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of City Council meeting minutes dated December 13th and January 3rd, 2018 and 2019 respectively. Is there a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Here, a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, so we'll move on to our next item, which is appointments. We have one appointment to the Recreation Committee tonight for Kayla Drummond, who's not here. How are you this evening?
Doing well. How are you?
Good.
So, at the mayor's suggested appointment, I would like to offer Kayla Drummond of 1421 Park Avenue as the newest appointment to the Recreation Commission. Kayla has served as an AmeriCorps member with the Recreation Department for the past year and a half. She's helped coordinate all of the events and activities throughout that time. She knows firsthand the expectations and responsibilities asked of any Recreation Commission member, and she's always willing to go above and beyond to get things done. And I feel she will be an invaluable asset to the Recreation Commission.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Here, a motion and a second. Any comments, any questions from members of council? Ms. Mealy.
The Finance Committee was fortunate to meet with Ms. Drummond on Tuesday, and I think all of us are pretty familiar with her, from her work in the Recreation Department. But nonetheless, we had a short and pleasant discussion with her about the work of the Recreation Commission, and she's excited to serve, which is exciting indeed, since we ask a lot of our Recreation Commission. And obviously, I believe all three of us would heartily support her appointment to the Commission.
Thank you. Other comments, other questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the appointment.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that appointment is approved. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing related to Willow View Personal Care Home. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Nar.
Good evening, Dr. Williamson and members of council. Tonight, we have a request from Willow View Personal Care Home as a conditional use expansion. They are located at 124 Emery Street. In accordance to the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code, anytime you have a conditional use, you're required to have a public hearing to allow those to speak as far as any questions and concerns, and at this time, I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much, and usually, council, as you know, council reserves its questions until we deal with the action item, and so now we'll follow our normal procedures for a public hearing and allow anyone here to speak on both behalf and in opposition to the project. And so, for the first call, I will call for anyone who would like to come up and speak on behalf of the project. Seeing none, I'll now call and see if anyone is here to speak in opposition to the project. Also seeing none on that side of the equation, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Here, a motion and a second. Mrs. Frank on the motion to close.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the public hearing is closed. So now, we can go down to item number 17, request for conditional use on the same address. Can I have a motion and a second to approve that conditional use?
So moved.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. Nar, further comments?
Again, what we have is Willow View Personal Care Home located at 124 Emery Street is requesting to expand their current conditional use of a 27-bed facility. It is located within the ML zoning district. The proposed plan would permit the facility to go ahead for an approved from 27 to a 29-bed facility. In January 2002, City Council granted a conditional use for the nine-bed facility. Then in November 2006, they were granted an expansion again for 18-bed facility. In August 2008, they were granted another nine-bed expansion, bringing the total to 27 beds. In June 2010, the facility was granted from the zoning hearing board meet for an expansion of the building itself so that they can operate the 27-bed facility. At this point in time, the zoning hearing board, again, granted the variance strictly for the setbacks of the building that they were requested to expand. What they're requesting to do is a final expansion to take it from 27 to 29-bed facility. Planning Commission did review it. They didn't have any questions or oppositions to it.
Okay. Comments or questions from members of council? In these various expansions in the past, had there been any pushback that you've been aware of, of neighbors or citizens in the community complaining about extra activity or the extra pressure on the neighborhood?
We've had none, including, like I said, we did advertise it to the advertise to local paper. We've had no opposition. It is inspected on a yearly basis by the state. We have received copies from the state, so we do not have any questions or concerns from the city at this time, as well as local residents.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further comments or questions, then Mrs. Frank on the conditional use, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that conditional use is approved. I'm going to go ahead, and while Mr. Nar is up there, move on. I think he has guests for at least one, if not both, of his additional items here.
Correct.
And so, the next item on the agenda will be a lot consolidation and subdivision of the Presbyterian home at 800 Louisa Street. Mr. Nar.
Okay. What you have is a request for a lot consolidation from Presbyterian Homes Incorporated. They are located at 800 Louisa Street to consolidate two parcels, 73004-105 and 73004-104. It is located in the R2 zoning district. The current land use is an existing care home and then the vacant lot. Again, if you remember years past, they had requested to demo the house there on the corner. They did so. It's been a grass lot at this point in time. One of the reasons, as a requirement, they were required for the use to consolidate them, and that's basically what they're requesting to do, is consolidate it so that they can use those parcels for the personal care home. They plan to put up a pavilion and a walking area, so as in accordance with zoning, they are required to consolidate that for the use. It was reviewed by both county and planning and with positive recommendations.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to approve this request for lot consolidation?
So moved.
Here, a motion and a second. Comments or questions from members of council? Will the pavilion and what you just described that they intend to do on the grassy area that will now be part of the consolidated lot, will that come before council?
No, it will not. Again, when they consolidate, it's really no, I mean, there's really nothing that would be required to go before county.
It's not a primary structure.
Correct. It's not a primary structure or anything like that.
Is there anything in particular, given its location, that would restrict what they can or can't do?
It wouldn't be any different than in a regular home where you basically put up a pavilion in your backyard and add sidewalk and a walking area, maybe some benches at that point in time. That's one of the requirements of the lot, reason for the lot consolidation.
Okay, thank you. If there are no comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the request.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the lot consolidation is approved. Next item on the agenda is a lot addition subdivision for Knight Confer at 1209 Race Street. Mr. Nar.
The following request is the proposed subdivision and lot add-on located at 1209 Race Street. It is located within the R3 zoning district. The current land use is an existing residential dwelling. The proposed subdivision would subdivide the lot containing 3,557 square feet from the residency. The residual would contain 12,224 square foot. The lot, Lot 1, would be added to parcel 67004-609. The proposed plan does not meet Section 1343-02 of the side yard setbacks. The requirement does not meet Section 131153 lot or the zoning lot for size-wise in an R2 zone, or in an R3 zoning district. In December 20th of 2018, the zoning hearing board did grant them both a variance for that. The Lycoming County Planning Commission did review the plans, as well as the city planning commission, and you do have comments from the county. Again, those comments were addressed by the zoning hearing board, who did grant the variance. What did, just to kind of give you an idea of the plans that you do have, the 3,557 square feet has two sheds. One's a dilapidated garage, which at this point in time, they plan on tearing down because it does not meet code. They'll keep the other garage. It'll add it on to the lot across there. What it is, is Knight's Funeral Home, Knight and Confer Funeral Home. It is their parking facility. Right now, basically, what they're doing, obviously, as you can see the pending storm we have, they may lose parking because they have to basically plow the snow in that area. So one of the reasons for this is so that snow could be used in that vacant area, which is added to their parcel, so it does not take away the required parking for their facility. And again, it was reviewed by county. County did make comments. The comments were addressed by the zoning hearing board, who did grant the variance.
Is there a motion and a second to approve this lot subdivision?
So moved.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Comments or questions? I just want to make sure I understand that the reason for the variance was because the Confer's new property.
No. Actually, what happened is the lot that you're taking, the residual lot that basically would be left, which is, has the home.
Which has, that was my question.
Right.
It's the home that would not be.
It's the home, the garage, the garage that they have in the back would not meet the setback requirements. So that, in order to, you can't subdivide something and then not have it meet zoning. So that garage for the home would not meet the setback, so at that point, that's why they needed a variance.
And so, to make sure I'm looking at the right building, it's the third, the third garage south of the named alley.
Correct.
Right, which is, will residually still be part of the same lot as the home.
It will be part of the home, correct.
And the part that is nonconforming is the distance between the home's garage and Knight Confer's garage.
Correct.
Because of the division. And so, not only is the variance already been granted, but also the impact, most, the biggest potential negative impact of not having the garage setback is to Knight Confer.
Correct.
Right, because usually, a neighbor doesn't want stuff close to their property.
Correct.
But in this case, they're making, the ones making the request anyway.
Correct.
Okay. So, I thought I understood. I just wanted to make sure that I did. And which of the two of the other garages is the one that will be coming down?
I believe the one that's closest to the home.
The bigger of the two.
Correct. It's closest to, yes, correct.
So, that will also create less density there in terms of buildings.
Correct, as well.
Right, blah, 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 anyway. Okay, thank you for that explanation. If there are any, no other questions, members of council, Mrs. Frank on the lot subdivision.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the lot subdivision is approved. Now, we'll return, I believe, to the top of the agenda to an ordinance amending Article 917. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance amending Article 917 designated as Philip E. Phil Preciosi Park.
Is there a motion and a second to approve this ordinance in first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. Girardi, how are you?
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, members of council. What we've been trying to do over the last few years started with the excavation ordinance on the streets, is we're trying to update and bring our ordinances back into the 21st century, which we're getting close to. We're doing, I think, a pretty good job. As I was going through, I noticed that the designation for this particular park is incorrect, so I wanted to make sure it was correct. What we changed was the boundaries, and I can go through that real fast. It's the Newberry Park located in the Newberry section of the city of Williamsport, which is bounded by Lynn Street, west to Pearl Street, north to Baker Street, west to Seneca Avenue, north to, and this was a change we made at our Public Safety Committee meeting, to Cherry Alley. I thought it was an unnamed alley, but it's actually called Cherry Alley. East to Huckleberry Alley, south to Lynn Street at the beginning. I attached a little drawing that you'll see. It was originally the area laid out in yellow was what the description was. Okay? So we changed it so now that encompasses the whole park. And this did go through a review process by one of our solicitors, and it also was through Public Safety, and they did recommend, Public Works, I'm sorry. I went through three different committees, so I got mixed up. And they recommended approval.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Katz from Public Works.
Yes, we did go over this, and I really, what this is, is, like you said, it's housekeeping, straightening up the ordinance amendment to that, because we already did pass the ordinance on the park itself. So it's just adding the street name, and all of us realizing that we do have a Cherry Alley at this point, instead of a no-name alley. And it was brought to a full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the ordinance in first reading.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in first reading. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance amending Article 321. Mrs. Frank, short form, please.
An ordinance amending Article 321, Peddlers and Solicitors.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance in first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. Girardi.
Yes. This ordinance was reviewed by Public Safety. What we did on this, and I gave you some revised copies, and everything that we've changed in this ordinance is highlighted in yellow in your copies, okay? I can go through them real quick if you'd like. Article 321, Section .07, we repealed that section, Center City Mall. Mr. Nar is in the process of revising the Center City Mall ordinance, which we're basically going to take out what we need in that and put in the Central Business District, because there's really not a Center City Mall district anymore. So instead of not revising and repealing it now, I'd have to come back through later and repeal it. Also, what we did was on Section 321 .01, we revised the section down below where it says, "Who without compensation or remediation solicit on behalf of or for any public-recognized religion, religious, educational, civic, charitable organization and newspapers carriers along their regular delivery route are not required to obtain a license as provided herein." We did eliminate the one section where it was the milk delivery, because no one ever delivers milk anymore, so I removed that from the section. On the next page, 321 .03, we changed this to applicant in person for a license at the Williamsport Police Department. Upon receipt of the application, the applicant shall provide the proper background check information as required and additional information as deemed necessary by the Williamsport Police Department due to character of the applicant and the business to conduct to protect the interests of the city residents. The last page that we changed was Section 321 .05, where it says, "The Police Chief", and then again, we repealed Section 321 .07. The reason why we'd made these changes with this, we had the HR director doing some of it. Mr. Pavlock was involved in some of it as the finance director. This all should be done through the Police Department, and I did talk to our Police Chief about it, and again, it came through with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much.
And our solicitor did review this also.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Henderson, Public Safety.
Yes, Public Safety did review this, and Mr. Girardi went through it very well there. Basically, just changing what department this is worked through, rather than the Finance Department. This is going to go through the public, or through the Police Department, as it is a public safety issue. And those that are obtaining licenses, peddler licenses, need to get a background check, and the best place to do that is through the Police Department, and so, it just makes sense. And so, yeah, we had some conversations about some different things, and we ended up passing this with a positive recommendation onto the full body of council.
Thank you. Comments or questions, members of council? Ms. Mealy?
Just as a quick question, do we have from prior to this revision, or do we have in the works in future, like a policy and procedure for what we require? I mean, clearly, a background check, but the additional information as deemed necessary. I'm just wondering if we have some, you know what I mean, something in place that says...
Yes, I believe they do down there. I talked with Donna, who's the one who takes in the application. There are certain things, like there could be fingerprinting, there could be, it says in the other portion of the ordinance, but they do have a policy and procedure, same as we do in the Building Department, when somebody comes in for a certain application. There's a form they get, they fill that out, and then they're required to go through a website, which is required through the Police Department. They just can't get any background check. It's a certain one that they will require them to do.
Got it, okay. Just wanted to make sure that it was, that it was a little more specific than that, so that we weren't opening ourselves up.
And I also found out, which the Police Chief is actually looking at right now, is our background check deals with Pennsylvania. There may be a situation where it may be someone who came in from Ohio, where we may have to do a different type of background check, so that's the reason why we say as deemed necessary.
Got it. Sounds good.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Allison.
Mr. Girardi, I know, I'm pretty sure we've talked about this before from previously when I was on Public Safety, but that was a while ago. How do we enforce this, for one, or advertise it and make it known? And my other question along with that, are they required to carry any identification with them that would verify that they have a peddler's license or solicitor's license, whichever, so that if they come knocking at your door, you could ask for that?
Yes, there is, and it's in section, I'd have to look, there is a section in there that says that they are required to carry the license that we provide for them. So if they have five people, they're going to get five licenses, they're going to be required to carry those with them. If you're a resident, you can knock, and they knock on your door, you can ask them to look at it. A police officer or an official can, on the street, go up to the person and say, "Let me see your license," and they would have to provide that license to them.
Do we periodically, to your knowledge, do the police, if they see somebody going door-to-door, do they?
That would be something that I believe the Chief would have to answer more than myself. I'm going to say, yes, they do, because Donna's going to know who they are, the timeframes they're going to be doing it in, and the location they'll be doing it in.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Other comments or questions? Mrs. Katz.
We're getting into the political season, and people will be going door-to-door, and it says that a license fee is not required, but with even politicians going door-to-door, or even charitable organizations, should they not even just have a piece of paper that states that they should, you know, a license?
Well, we talked about that at the meeting, okay? And the consensus was that we felt if it's a nonprofit, someone who's not trying to get money from somebody, that they felt they should not be. Now, we did talk about possibly having them just get a license, okay, but we discussed it, and the overall consensus was, no, we didn't feel it was necessary.
You didn't think it was necessary?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? I have one that's not about the changes, but it's about the ordinance. I thought I'd ask Mr. Lubin. In reading through 46-year-old language in 321 .05, it designates, now will designate the Police Chief, or their designee, the ability to revoke the license. It doesn't, there isn't a procedure for appealing that revoking of license? So due process is my question. Is that something we should review going forward?
If the license is revoked, it's obviously an adjudication, and they would have a right under the local agency law to appeal it to court.
Already in other parts of the law allows the appeals process.
The local.
I'm sorry.
The local agency law would cover it.
Okay.
As opposed to who would, you know, do you want an appeal to City Council?
If we wanted to change it other than what that law allowed?
Well, yeah, we could have our own internal review process.
Right, but there is a review process in place in the absence of us having an alternative one.
Correct.
Okay, then the issue is covered, and I'm satisfied there. And it had nothing to do with what Joe was trying to change, but I thought I'd bring it up, since I was reading this ordinance for the first time in the office.
But also, realistically, there'd have to be cause.
Sure, of course.
And the Chief would, in the exercise of discretion, I don't, there shouldn't be a problem.
No, I wouldn't imagine so, but I just wanted to make sure, in case that rare instance occurs where there was, that due process was allowed for and everything. If there are no further comments or questions, then Mrs. Frank on the ordinance in first reading.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in first reading. Next item on the agenda is ordinance amending Article one seventeen dot one fee schedules. Mrs. Frank?
An ordinance amending Article one one seven general fee schedule.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve this ordinance in first reading?
I'll move.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second. Mr. Girardi?
Yes, this is an ordinance that we revise, this is our fee schedule for most of the fees that we charged in the city. We try to revise this once a year at this time. Again, you should have copies of everything that's been changed, it should be in yellow. I'll go over those. Fee, basically, a regular building permit fee, over ten thousand dollars, be an additional fee of fourteen dollars, which it was thirteen dollars. It's an average cost of, on a hundred thousand dollar project, it's a hundred, yeah, a hundred thousand dollar project, it would be an additional hundred dollars. We didn't want to go through, I try to stay away from doing the lower ones, those are mostly the mom and dads who are trying to fix their home up, maybe their porch, so we try not to, you know, interrupt them from doing that, we want that to happen. On the next page, the zoning book is sixty dollars, I raised that just for the fact that our zoning book and ordinance, I mean, our ordinance is online, so there's really no reason for anyone to come in, but if they do want to come in, paper prices and everything, trying to keep up with those kind of things. Stormwater review, used to be a sketch plan review of a hundred and seventy-five dollars. We never had a stormwater review fee in there, but when people come in for their stormwater management, we have to review it, it goes through Mr. Nar and zoning, it will go through our engineering department, okay, and then we have to act to go out and do some physical inspections, so we decided there should be a fee for that. On the next page, driveway permits are sixty dollars, we raised that just to try to keep in line with your curb cuts and your street cuts. Peddlers or solicitor licenses would be thirty dollars per month, okay? We used to have it to be, I think it was fifteen dollars, but again, thirty dollars per month. It covers their paperwork, covers what they have to do, also covers the Police Department if they do have to go out, or if they're going out to verify what people are doing out there. The other one, replacement, excuse me, replacement license for contractors and plumbers is ten dollars. Replacement, building permits are ten dollars, they used to be five. Copies are a dollar per page, now this is not the Right to Know Act, but this is just a general copy. Somebody wants to come in and get copies of paperwork, it used to be seventy-five cents, we're going to make a dollar. And the last one would be the college letter, trying to get that in line with the rental property inspections, we charge seventy-five dollars for rental property, now we're going to be charging sixty dollars for that college letter. In case you're wondering what the difference is, the college letter is something that the college requires us to provide them every year, because they have a list of when people are coming in and are looking for their students, either the students or their parents are looking for a place for their kids to reside, they get a letter from us every year, basically saying this does meet the code requirement, and it has been inspected, which we do go out to inspect them, and we do those yearly, instead of doing them every four years. And that is it.
Thank you, and this was reviewed, I think, this time by Finance Committee, right?
Yes, this was reviewed by Finance with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
Yep, there's actually not a whole lot to say. Finance did review this and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. I think actually, the majority of our discussion might have centered on the extent to which some of the fees are not entirely perhaps in line with our costs, as in our costs are much higher than the fee itself, but I think, what did you say, Joe, for a driveway, we've got to go out, verify, right, the engineer has to go out?
Correct. The engineer and the zoning department have to verify, then we got to go out and set grades for your curb drops and so forth, and then after it's done, we got to go back out to do the reinspection of the, make sure it has been put in properly, because your driveway and your sidewalk went in line, your sidewalk's at one angle, and your driveway's at another, so we got to make sure it's just not a straight shot up because of the handicap requirements, the sidewalk needs to be more of a level area going across. So there is a lot of work involved in it.
Anyway, that's neither here nor there, but, yeah, we forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Are there other comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Henderson?
Just looking at the peddler's and solicitor's license, that used to be fifteen, is that correct?
That's correct.
Was that annually, or was that monthly?
The way it worked was, from talking with Donna, was fifteen dollars up to six months, then when it was six months, it was fifty dollars, and then for a year's license, it was, I think, a hundred dollars.
Okay.
So, we felt just to do it monthly, I know we did discuss this at the Finance Committee meeting, and we also actually discussed it, I believe, at Public Safety.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, I just wondered on that, because I thought from fifteen, if that was annually, to thirty a month, that's quite a jump there.
Right.
But it's not exactly like that.
Correct. And again, you, if you wish to change that, you can, we just felt it was easier to do it monthly.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
One question, do you have a sense, how many peddler's permits are, I was trying to come up with a P word again, sold, permitted per year?
Right, that I could not answer, because it typically never went through us as far as the permitting process went, fee collection, that would be something, I can find that information out for you and get it back.
It'd be interesting to know. I think the idea of the question came after Mr. Allison's comment and Ms. Katz's comment. There are plenty of people that are excluded from the ordinance and will remain excluded from the ordinance because they're for political reasons or for nonprofit purposes or whatever. I wonder, and there are plenty of people doing things for profit, but I wonder how many of them actually go through the permitting process.
Right.
And I think that's council's concern, is can we, it's not, I mean, yes, of course, we want to go out and follow up on the people to make sure they're in the areas at the times that they, they actually said, were proactive and said that they were going to be doing. I think the real concern are the people who never, who never contacted the city at all.
Right.
And, you know, you hear about it on Facebook or whatever, occasionally, people wondering if somebody's legitimately in their neighborhood.
There's at least three or four organizations a year that come in, I know, that get four phones. If you see the little stands on the side of the road, they're giving phones away and so forth, they're required to get that license also, so, but I can get that information for you.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the ordinance.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing a recipient agreement with Firetree Place. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing a sub-recipient agreement between the City of Williamsport and Firetree Place.
Is there a motion in a second to approve the ordinance, or the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second?
Second string tonight.
You're not Mrs. Young? Are you second string tonight?
Second string tonight.
All right. Mr. Pavlov, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you, Dr. Williamson, members of council. The resolution before you is to approve a sub-recipient agreement with Firetree Place in the amount of six thousand dollars. This funding was approved as part of the 2018 Community Development and Home Budgets. The funds will be utilized for salary costs for four part-time counselors who administer an after-school academic enrichment and recreation program for low to moderate income children in grades kindergarten through twelfth grade. The attached sub-recipient agreement outlines the terms under which Fireplace will receive their funding, and includes items such as scope of services, time of performance, the budget, method of payment, notices, and general conditions. I believe that this item was reviewed by Stephanie at the Finance Committee on Tuesday.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
This item was reviewed by the Finance Committee, and we forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. As noted, we actually already approved this funding well back in probably 2017 to the 2018 budget year, but the 2018 funding doesn't actually arrive until the last quarter of 2018, meaning that we're only in a position to disperse it in the first quarter of 2019. So this, so we additionally have funded Firetree Place for the 2019 year, but we probably won't see that agreement until the beginning of 2020. But, all of that said, as it turns out, Firetree had to submit documentation on the expenditure of the funds before they could receive them, so it's a little bit of a wash, they would have finished expending them at some point in the 2018 budget year. Most of our discussions centered around the question of how Firetree is doing it, if their programming is successful, not that anyone was questioning whether or not it was, but merely that I don't think that any of the documentation we received actually deals with the success rate of the program or any, you know, tracking of student scoring in schools or anything like that. So Stephanie said that she was going to speak to them and see if they, if they were tracking those elements, and if they could provide that documentation to us as well. My assumption would be that some other element of the funding they're receiving probably requires them to keep track of that information, and if we're not receiving it, it's simply because we haven't asked. With that, Finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Other comments, questions from members of council?
Mr. Allison?
Along those lines, one other thing we talked about was the tutoring to, and maybe Councilman Slaughter has some knowledge of this, if there's any interaction between the school district and those who are tutoring there to, you know, if they would be familiar with curriculum and those kinds of things, that you know...
I'm not familiar with any of it at the time, right now, but I could check.
But it wouldn't be a bad idea if...
Right. I'm not, do they, are they using college kids to tutor?
That we didn't...
I believe it's a volunteer group, I would assume that some of them are college students, but probably they're coming.
I think they normally are, but I don't know of any connection right now, but I could check.
Okay. I guess part, if I might break in, Mr. Allison, part of the discussion related to the fact that clearly any entity that was providing tutoring and/or sort of after-school stabilizing of, you know, or backup of schoolwork probably should be in communication with the school district, just to, just as kind of a check and a balance, you know what I mean, both in, you know, making sure the students are doing well in school, making sure they're following up at the after-school program, and, right, so I'm not sure to what extent that might be happening, but it would certainly be a positive thing, I would think, for both entities to coordinate.
Just want to follow up, do we know, is there an age range for the after-school program?
I believe it was listed as K through twelve.
K through twelve, correct.
I mean, that's a large range, I was thinking, it'd be easier if it was a, I'll find, I'll if there's any.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing a sub-recipient agreement with SPCA. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing a sub-recipient agreement between the City of Williamsport and Leicoming County SPCA.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second, Mr. Pavlov?
This resolution is for a sub-recipient agreement with Leicoming County SPCA in the amount of five thousand dollars. The Leicoming County SPCA awards vouchers towards the neuter and spay of pets of low-income residents. The spay-neuter voucher program is designed to offer reduced rates for spade, spaying, and neutering as an incentive for low-income pet owners who might otherwise not be able to afford the operations. The SPCA will collect the income information to verify eligibility of the participants for the voucher program. Again, this has the same terms and conditions as the previous agreement with Firetree Place, and was reviewed with the Finance Committee on Tuesday.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
I believe that we do receive quite a bit of documentation on the success of our spay-and-neuter voucher funding with SPCA, but, or that if we weren't being successful there, there would really be something to wonder about. This is, the city has awarded this annually, I think, honestly, I'm not even certain how long for, we've increased the amount over the last couple of years, but we've been working with the SPCA with, and funding them from a couple of different departments for years now, and Finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mr. Henderson?
Just wanted to note that this is an increase from our previous years that we've been able to use in this way, and that's good, because we're well aware that it's a major need in our city, and so we would really encourage residents to take advantage of this program, to keep at bay as much as possible the population of cats in the city. So just wanted to make mention of that and encourage people to utilize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution related to uncollected taxes for 2018. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution on collected city real estate taxes for 2018.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second. Mr. Grimes, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Thank you, Ty.
What was that?
Like you, Ty?
Thank you. Resolution in front of you is to authorize turning over nine hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents of uncollected real estate, 2018 real estate taxes, to the County Tax Claim Bureau for collection and/or sale. This is something we do each year with the uncollected real estate taxes at the end of the year, so that they can be collected the remainder.
Any comments or questions from members of council? This annual resolution. What was the, I had budget time, we always get the ninety-two percent collection rate, and it, I know from Hessler Street, rarely varies very much. Do you have that, have you had an opportunity to calculate that for this year?
It's about ninety-three and a half percent.
So better than normal, which is, which is good news, and we tend to see that happen, I think, when the economy's strong, and of course, when we have a strong individual in our tax office.
Thank you.
So if there are no comments or questions, Mr. Noviello?
Just very quickly, this figure, nine hundred and thirteen thousand such year, is that just for the one, for one year?
Correct.
It says to January eighth, 2019, but that's just for the eighteen?
Correct, we closed our books on January eighth, 2019. We give time for postmark mail to come in, we give people a little leeway because of the holidays, and then we also want to be certain that no personal checks that have been paid for taxes are returned for non-sufficient funds, so that's a date this year that we closed our accounts.
Are there any carryover, non-paid accounts from like seventeen?
They're all with the county, and there are still some unpaid accounts, but they're with the County Tax Claim Bureau.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution exonerating the city treasurer from collection of the 2018 taxes. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution exonerating the city treasurer from collection of 2018 real estate taxes.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second, Mr. Grimes?
Now that you've authorized all those unpaid taxes to be given to the County Tax Claim Bureau, this next resolution just exonerates me from being required to collect those same amount of taxes.
And a standard resolution that we see this time also every year. Comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
I say we stick it to them.
Have to fight with the county so you can collect it first.
Other comments, questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a letter of agreement with Lockhaven. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution to approve the letter of agreement between the City of Williamsport and Lockhaven University for spring 2019 intern in the Recreation Department.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second, Mrs. Navia?
Yes, thank you. So I was actually approached by a gentleman named Coleman Hamilton, who is currently going who is currently going through the Recreation Management Program at Lockhaven University. And part of his requirements to graduate this May is that he must complete 400 hours of practical work experience. And he thought that he would be a good fit for our office attached to his resume. There is no monetary exchange for him. He will be receiving college credit. And I think he would be a great fit for the office.
Thank you. Are there comments, questions for members of council? Mr. Noviello?
This comes with a Act 33 clearance as well?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Mealy?
Just to note that finance...oh, no, it's fine. There actually isn't any financial obligation whatsoever in this agreement, but it did come before finance regardless. So we established that we weren't even...all that we really have to do for this individual, aside from providing training, is first aid. In the event of, you know, we're not providing anything else. The university takes care of everything. So there's no financial obligation and finance, obviously forwarded to the full body of council with positive recommendation.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for agreement with a city solicitor. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution, agreement for legal services with city solicitor.
Is there a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
So move.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. Lumen, how are you this evening?
Good. Good evening, Dr. Williamson and members of council. The next two items on the agenda are the annual contracts between...for the city and between Cassell and Bonner for solicitor and the McCormick Law Firm Assistant Solicitor. The only change really in the agreements is that it sets forth the scope of work in general legal services. It just puts in a little more detail what we've been doing over the years anyway. Beyond that, there's no real changes, and really, this really covers both of the agreements. And I believe it was reviewed by the finance.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy?
It was reviewed by finance, and we were pleased to see the duties, I think, delineated a little more fully in the contracts. I think that will help, not so much because our current solicitors weren't performing exactly those duties, but because we may not always have the same solicitors, and it would behoove us to have a list of exactly what duties they're performing for us. Not a threat nor merely an observation. But so we appreciated the sort of additional work that had gone into the contract and the additional effort on behalf of both the solicitors and city staff. And we did ask about...generally speaking, when city council reviews a resolution of this nature, there would be kind of a not-to-exceed element in the resolution related to the sort of contracted amount, whichever it was. But our HR, the head of HR, Ms. Dayhoff, did look into it and said that we had never had a not-to-exceed on the front of this resolution. And I think Mr. Lumen recommended that we not do that either, correct?
It didn't really matter one way or the other because it's a fixed amount anyway.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
So we can't exceed it.
So there was some discussion about the historical record and ease of finding the information and yada, yada, yada. But whatever the recommendation of the city is, I think, is fine. It sounded as though HR was recommending that we move forward without the dollar. At least, I'm assuming from the revised sheets that we received, that HR is recommending not listing the specific compensation, but an amount not to exceed the compensation set forth in Section 4 of the front sheet. So that would be the recommendation then of finance. We forwarded both of these items to the full body of council with positive recommendation, if you wouldn't like to rehash that on the second time around.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item then is a resolution related to the assistant solicitor. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution, agreement for legal services with assistant solicitor.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
So move.
Here, a motion and a second. Mr. Lumen, anything further to add?
Nothing to add, no.
Ms. Mealy, anything further to add? Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is also approved. As a side note, I would just pass along that I still miss when you ask Mr. Gredo if there's anything further to add, and it would take a couple minutes to say no.
He taught me how to say nothing.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Lumen. I believe that brings us, unless somebody corrects me, to number 20 on our agenda, which is except for filing. Does that sound right? All right. And so we have the Controller's Report of November 18th, 2018, the Finance Committee meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2018, and October 9th, 2018, public work minutes of September 25th, 2018, and public safety minutes of October 9th, 2018. Is there a motion and a second to approve these...I'm sorry, except for these for filing?
So move.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are accepted for filing. Next item is announcements. There will be an executive session immediately following this meeting for the purpose of public safety. Next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, January 31st, at 7:30 p.m. here in council chambers. Other upcoming meetings include...well, first, I should say that on Monday, January 21st, City Hall will be closed. Tuesday, January 22nd, at 11:00 a.m. is the Historic Preservation Committee. Noon is the Planning Commission, and 3:30 is the ERC.
I don't believe we've had any requests, have we? Okay. We can cancel that then. Thank you.
So we will not have the 3:30, January 22nd ERC Committee meeting. On Tuesday, January 29th, then, at 1:00 p.m. is the Finance Committee. 2:30 p.m. is Public Works. 3:30 p.m. is Public Safety. And at 7:00 p.m. is the Citizens Core Council. That brings us to the...Ms. Katz?
We have a residency ad hoc.
And that has been advertised, I know.
It has been January 30th.
And January 30th at...
3:15.
3:15 is the Ad hoc Committee on Residency Requirement. So that gets into the record as well. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Are there comments from members of council? Mr. Allison?
Just briefly. I don't want to open a can of worms. I just want to revisit something from our last meeting. Unfortunately, the mayor's not here tonight. He couldn't attend. He had other... He was out of town at some point today. In any case, I just...there's been a lot of questions in the public. There have been articles in the paper, a lot of speculation about the basketball committee, Memorial Park Committee, and the members and people being named in the paper. We broached the conversation two weeks ago without knowing any names. No one was targeted. We had no idea. No names were offered at that time. The questions we asked were purely procedural and legal. I think they were entirely appropriate. And if the committee is going to go forward in some form or iteration, whatever it is, those questions, I believe, still stand because they're valid questions. Unfortunately, some individuals were mistakenly named as being on that committee. They've said so publicly. You know, I just, on behalf of the city, you know, offering apology for anyone who's been offended or their family brought in some way. That was never...certainly never our intention. I think there's an orderly, good way to do this kind of thing. I think that's what we want to see on council. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I know the sense of the other council members. We continually talk about process and procedure. And if you follow the right process and follow a competent, well-thought-out procedure, it tends to really mitigate the opportunity for these kinds of things to happen. I think that's all we want to see going forward. As I said last time, we're putting the hoops back up. I believe that's a very good thing. We have to make sure it's successful. We have to do everything we can in our power to make sure it's successful. And engage in relationships and conversations and communications with people. We can't just offer rules and regulations and edicts for people to adhere to. We need to connect on a person-to-person basis and with groups of people that not only are going to be using the courts, but involved in some way. You know, that's the kind of process I think we all want to see put in place. And I think the community does, too. I don't think people are against basketball. I was at the town hall meeting years ago when the reasons were put forward for taking the hoops down. Let's just say I wasn't totally convinced that we gave our best efforts at that point to mitigate any problems that existed, whether they were perceived problems or real problems. I'm just very adamant myself, and I believe others are too, that we do this right, that it be done in a good procedural manner. And I think it's going to be a win-win for everybody involved. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. And I'll take the opportunity, first, by agreeing with everything that Mr. Allison said. I think, you know, that when you get the procedures right, when you get the process right, you more often than not get the outcome right. And in this case, I think basically any observer within the city can see that the process was not followed in any way that made sense. It was kind of shoot from the hip. And maybe that works on occasion, but usually it doesn't. And so when we asked questions, we had no idea who the mayor, two weeks ago, was claiming had reached out to him. And in fact, we've heard tell that it was not anyone reaching out to him, but him reaching out to others to participate on the committee. And apparently, based on the public announcement since then, not everyone that may have been reached out to actually agreed to do it. But the committee and its makeup, the individuals on it, I don't even think that was the heart of our questions a couple of weeks ago. It was really about the procedures that were in place and the goals that the mayor had for the committee. And as I personally said and it was accurately reported in the paper, we heard two different messages. One, that they would be active participants in the park. Different...we could use different words, but in essence, policing or overseeing activities, basketball activities in Memorial Park. And we, at the same time, were hearing that they would not be engaging with the participants of the park, but instead would be informal advisors to the mayor. And I think, and what I said in the paper and what I believe all of the motives behind questions by members of council were, well, if it's one thing, if it's informal advisors to the mayor, fine. He can talk to anyone he chooses and get advice and direct and choose to take the advice or not from anybody he chooses. But if individuals are representing the city, then we have a liability that we have to ensure essentially so that we don't expose taxpayer dollars to issues of liability. And so there are normal procedures you put into place to have people be protected under the city's liability insurance, including being formal members of an organization. And if they are going to be interacting directly with the public, especially the public that is not age 18 and older, which are many users of parks playing basketball, then clearances and other procedures in place. And so we were simply asking those questions, and we were getting two sets of answers. And so that's where our follow-up questions came from. And the mayor passed along documentation, I think, to several organizations over the last week to try to clarify that. And I was hoping to...including council, we received the same documents tonight to try to make sure that our original concerns were addressed, I think, is the motivation behind the creation of the document. And having read that, I intended tonight to ask the mayor, and he's not here, so I can't, for clarity about our original questions. Because as his document says, this is an informal advisory committee that will meet with the mayor to periodically discuss their opinions and recommendations, and therefore, no clearances are needed. Okay, fine, if it stopped there. But in the next paragraph, it says, "Members of the committee will communicate proper expected behavior at the court with basketball participants and families through opportunities at church functions." My interpretation of that is, by extension, as representatives of the city. Well, it doesn't matter where they're interacting with youth. If they're representing the city, my interpretation is they would require clearances. And so even the lack of clarity that we received two weeks ago and the lack of clarity we saw in the paper over the last couple of weeks continues in the document he provided to try to seek that out. And of course, you know, since he wasn't unable to be here, it'll be another occasion for us to seek that clarity. But I'm still not quite clear what his goals are or how the organization will achieve those goals. To me, who is a member of the organization is an entirely separate issue, and he can choose...since so far it'll be an informal organization, he can choose who he would like. That's not an issue to me. The issue to me is process and procedure and protecting the city from liability. Other comments or questions on this topic or other topics for members of council? Mr. Henderson?
Just to add on, there is in place advisory committees. You know, we have a Recreation Commission for that purpose, to offer that advice and to help in those decisions. And maybe that's part of the disappointment as well because that avenue is available currently. And so, you know, we'd like to see as much transparency as possible. And that's a perfect way to offer that transparency. And so, you know, that's, I think, maybe just also another part of the issue. But we look forward to discussions in the future and seeing what the plan is going forward. Because I would agree with Councilman Allison that I think this is a win. This is a win. And we're glad to have the basketball hoops and our young people able to utilize those hoops. So let's go forward here in a transparent way. Thank you.
If there are no other comments from members of council, any comments from the members of the administration? Seeing none. Any comments from the general public? Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please contain your comments to three minutes on matters of city business.
Oh, thank you all. Good evening. I had this written out also for the mayor. So I had here top, you know, good evening to the mayor, city council members, and all the officials, and all the viewers. But you guys just took my words off my paper and spoke about it.
And before you get started all the way, could I have your name and address, just for the record?
Yes, my name is Irish Griffin. I live at 1546 West Fourth Street, and I am a resident here at Williamsport. I just didn't want you all to take my glory for my grandson. See him sitting there. He goes, "Grandmas, are they judges?" And so he knew what I was coming for. So I just want to come up and just complete this, even though you all said it exactly the way I, you know, I'm going to say it. So again, good evening, mayor, city council members, city officials, and all viewers. My name is Irish Griffin. That's my address. My reason for being here tonight is to speak about the hoops. I first would like to thank the mayor, who is not here, for receiving a revelation about the hoops and acting on it. Now, with what city council spoke about in the sun cassette, as far as him moving too soon to put the hoops back up, yes, procedures and goals are necessary, and that I must agree on. I think that there ought to be a few meetings, which I'm aware is in process, and also gathering a committee, which is also in progress, which I do not think is a bad idea. Now, the reason I say "I" is because I do believe I speak for the majority of West End, the Williamsport, and the city at large. So I say yes to the hoops. They are well worth the taxpayers' dollars. They're used seven days a week, spring, summer, and fall. And as for drug sales and violence, that doesn't happen like people say it does. You can count the violence, gun shooting, on one finger. The shooting that occurred at the park was unnecessary and absurd. I knew both the young men, the perpetrator and the victim. It was stupid and shouldn't have happened, and it was over a young lady, not drugs. And the video was made in the park that was also unnecessary and absurd. The guy was an idiot making a video in the park like that, but no drugs were sold there. It was just his video that he made, crazy video. So now, I'm done. The hoops, they're worth it. May not be...may not...the hoops, they're worth it. May not be worth it to some individuals, but for the community. not be worth it to some individuals, but for the community. Just about every male here that lives in Williamsport has played hoops at Memorial Park, so I say yes to the hoops. Bring the hoops back. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Are there other comments from the general public? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Here, a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody.